Good afternoon Chairman Yaski and members of the Commission. I'll be brief, I know that's in between us and a break. My name is Pat Russo, I'm Special Counsel at the law firm Wendell's, Marks, Lane and Mittendorf. Our firm is pro bono counsel to the International Association of Transportation Regulators, IATR. I am submitting this testimony on behalf of the IATR and its President, Matthew W. Doss, who had a pre-existing conflict that unfortunately kept him out of the country, but he extends his regrets about being here. As you know, the IATR because of our position does not, in our unique world, does not take a position of support or in opposition to the rules. The IATR is a leading group of government taxi and limousine regulators from around the world and its mission is to provide and foster mutual interest concern and exchange of ideas. For some time, the IATR has recognized the emergence of the smartphone applications as one of the most exciting and innovative changes to the transportation industry. However, some of these apps operate in a manner that creates serious concerns for the public and regulators alike. In response, our firm provided services on a pro bono basis to the IATR when they requested that we examine these concerns in light of the regulatory landscape in numerous major cities throughout the United States and the world. As a result of our research, we published a report, Rogue Smartphone Applications for Taxi Cabs and Limousines: Innovation or Unfair Competition. The report is available on our website, I've provided copies to the Commissioners today. As a result of the research undertaken, here are two key takeaways for the industry to know. First, right now, it is the Wild West out there, with private equity-backed startups and established industry companies alike scrambling to have the next app hit it big. Second, all apps are not created equal. Some operate within the rules and other rogue apps do not operate on a level playing field. These rogue apps are under investigation by regulators in the U.S. who possibly running afoul of laws, designed to protect consumers from untested taxi meters, illegal refusals, and operations that do not ensure that drivers and vehicles alike meet the various requirements for licensure. As a fault to the report and it benefits IATR members, President Doss created a special Apps Committee to study the issue. The IATR App Committee, which included New York City, presented at an international public hearing on November 17th at its conference, Model Regulations. We are grateful for the TLC's leadership role in the committee, and now for these model regulations to the TLC as an IATR member, and for your consideration as you discuss and deliberate over the final form of the rules. Thus far, the report and the draft model regulations have engendered much discussion about these smartphone apps. In the weeks ahead, much more will be done. I provided the Commission with the requisite number of copies of the report, and my prepared statement is part of my testimony today. I'm here available to answer any questions, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russo, Counselor.
Question. Then, with this app, apps vendor, I just want to understand then, it could be just any vendor? And basically, people make payments, and what if there's an issue, like the vendor doesn't comply, or do they come to TLC? I mean, where are we with vendors per se? Do they have to be approved? Are there a limit? How many vendors? Or is it, because I mentioned, you said it's a Wild West out there, so then now we are, if we're going to allow this, then how are we gonna...
Let me give a brief answer to that, and if it's incomplete, you know, ask me for more. The rules as drafted envision apps that simply allow a passenger to hail a taxi and don't involve payment of the fare for the trip, that's one type, or apps that allow you to hail the taxi and pay for the trip, or simply you pay for the trip in a taxi that you've hailed the traditional way, by putting your hand in there. Parthenetically, that last category, I think, is something that we haven't really touched on much, but is of great value in these rules. In other words, they will pave the way for, and no doubt you will see, apps that say, "Forget it, I'm not bothering to try and connect somebody to a driver, that's too complicated, but what I am going to do is let you preload a credit card in here, the minute I get into the taxi, I say, 'This is how I want to pay,' and it saves you the swipe at the end of the trip, that's a couple of seconds, New Yorkers, a couple of seconds, they seem to like that." Okay. So, three kinds. The first type, that simply pairs the passenger with the driver and arranges for the, enables the passenger to hail a cab, that is, has relatively few requirements. The things that involve payment, you, we then have the same type of security concerns that you do with the swiping, and they have a lot, there are a lot more detailed standards in these rules that they have to meet to make sure the credit cards are secure. In either, for any kind, the app developed, that app would have to be licensed by the TLC, so in answer to your question, does anyone, they will have to get a license, prove that they have met the requirements, in the case of something involves payment, that's a much higher bar, because we have to protect customer. There's no limit, though, on the number. The limit is the marketplace, or the kind of constraint as a marketplace, we figure that we, you know, we don't know which company will do the best job, and ultimately, one or two or three or six will prevail, because they'll provide a service that the customer wants. So that's what these rules as drafted would do.
If you don't think that it's a license to the vendor, then are there requirements for that vendor? Because as you said, of course, the consumers will choose, well, like, app A, or B, or C, or D, but I'm a little concerned regarding what he mentions, in terms of, you know...
Yeah, you know, a lot of regulatory jurisdictions have not taken steps to address it or formulate rules. That was what the purpose of the IATR created, the model regulations. That's why the major cities in the United States, Toronto, Canada, Australia, and others weighed in in the creation of these model regulations, some of which you see reflected already in the rules that is presented today for consideration, some of which are other items that may be inappropriate for New York, or may not have been thought of yet, or might be in, the different jurisdictions might look at it and say, "This fits our model." This might be a location that dispatches cabs, unlike New York City, for example.
But ensure it, there's no limit on the number. The companies do have to prove they've met the requirements, again, if it involves payment, extensive security, including third-party validation and testing and so forth, fine. There's a bond requirement that I think will serve as something of a hurdle for separating out a fly-by-night from a non-fly-by-night, but, you know, but there's no limit on the number. What I would envision, what I picture happening, is that out of the gate, you'd have a couple of people, three, four, enter the market, and customers will see, if, when I use this one, taxi actually does show up as told, when I use this one, nobody showed up, I'm not going to use that one anymore. The one where the taxi showed up and it worked as it was supposed to, I'll use that again and again, and maybe there's room for two like that, or three, the market will tell us, and customers will tell us by what they choose to use. Any further?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. So, we will take a 15-minute break, and we'll reconvene, it's 12:40, we'll reconvene at 1 o'clock sharp, and Commissioners, we will convene again at 1 o'clock sharp. I don't actually see, oh, I see she's having, yeah, 2:00. So, folks, we're going to reconvene, it is 1:06 PM, if that's relevant. The first speaker will be Michael Krisher from iTaxi, then Martin Heikel from Flatiron Apps, and then Ira Goldstein from the Black Car Fund. Oh, is that the same one? And right at the moment, Commissioners Yaski and Russo are in the room. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Michael Krisher, I'm the founder of iTaxi. We are a technology that's not been released yet. As far as the speech, everything's sort of been talked about, so I guess I'll just go on with a couple...
Well, thank you.
I'll go on with a couple of comments that I have, as far as safety. We believe that a driver should not be allowed to use the application while driving. You can set technologies into the applications that actually prevent those apps from being ran while the car's driving, so that should be a mandatory feature. We also think that all the applications should be basing their drivers off of the driver database to its public knowledge to the city, because if not, then how do we know if we're having licensed drivers? All the apps should be wheelchair accessible. And then a big concern that we have is, all of these applications seem to be charging either the rider or the driver at some point in time. It's free for me to go out on the street and put my arm up and hail a cab, why am I paying extra to do that with these other applications? I don't get that. I think that's pretty much all I have to say, I just had some brief points, but...
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, Martin Heikel from Flatiron Apps Co., followed by Jaheer Khan from Halo. You can go ahead and, yeah, take a space, if that's what you're saying. Oh, okay, all right, then we'll skip over him, and Mr. Khan, there are three people here, additional people from Halo who are signed up, Jaheer Khan, Melissa Plout, and Delano Eloy. Why don't you all come and stand up, and I guess if you're all going to be saying substantially the same thing, maybe just you could, one of you speak and represent that you're all prepared to say substantially the same thing.
Some different things.
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jaheer Khan, I'm a New York City taxi driver, my father has been driving a cab for decades. My brother signed up to get his hack license the day after his birthday. He would have done it on his birthday, but unfortunately, it was Sunday and the TLC is closed. But, so many, my friends are cab drivers...
I will, I'll just ask, Stan, we should consider whether we should make any sort of licensing rule to be open on birth, for people need to get a license on their birthdays specifically, but thank you for bringing that issue to our attention.
Of course. I became a taxi driver not out of any financial necessity, but because I wanted to. I deeply care about New York City and its taxi industry and what happens to it. My concern about the future of this industry was highlighted after Hurricane Sandy. My house was under 12 feet of water, my family was displaced for several weeks, our taxi completely destroyed. In the weeks that followed, Halo was there for me and my family. They were also helping others who were affected by the storm by volunteering at local shelters, as well as reaching across their network across the globe to raise money for Red Cross. In addition to that, they sent out vital information to taxi drivers about how to find gas, as well as other emergency alerts. As I continue to reveal, Halo remains a positive presence in my life, and I feel that other cab drivers will benefit from what they're bringing to the city. Passenger ask me all the time, what does it take to be a good yellow cab driver? I tell them, you need to have focus, foresight, a little bit of skill, a little bit of luck, and a whole lot of God's will. I believe the TLC had tremendous foresight when it came to creating the TPAP back in '07. Without it, I think the most recent economic slowdown would have had a much greater impact on drivers, if it weren't for the increase in the number of passengers as a result of drivers' ability to accept credit card payments. I'm here today to say that TLC should ensure that New York City taxi market continues to be the world standard for innovation and technology. We need to embrace technology, not fear it. Many cities around the country and around the world are already benefiting from the use of mobile apps in taxis. I think apps have value that transcends the simple convenience, that can address challenges that have plagued New York City taxi drivers and passengers. Taxi drivers spend considerable amount of time running empty looking for passengers, and passengers stand around waiting to be seen by drivers, sometimes under brutal weather conditions. By having a one-tap system for accepting e-hails, apps provide a simple tool to use to make shifts more efficient, to fill out downtime, resulting in more money at the end of each shift in our pockets. Accepting an e-hail is no different than turning on the radio, the AC, or interacting with the meter or dim. It's seamless and completely safe for both driver and the passenger. I'd like to thank the Commission for creating these rules, and I hope you pass them on December 13. With all of our hard work and determination, we can maintain New York City position as a leader when it comes to having the best taxi system in the entire world. Thank you.
You're a New York City taxi driver?
Yes.
So what is your connection to Halo?
I learned about Halo a couple of months ago. I was really intrigued about the technology, learned more about it, and now, in addition to driving a cab, also consult with Halo.
So you're a consultant for Halo?
I advise them on how to adapt the technology to make it fit New York. Of course, Halo started back in London. We, a lot of drivers are happily to adapt the technology to make it fit New York, and to make it organic.
I understand, I just want to understand your appointment, you're employed by Halo, correct?
Yeah, at this point, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, again. My name is Melissa Plout, and I'm a yellow cab driver, and I'm here to talk about e-hailing. I want to thank the TLC for making the effort to bring smartphone technology into New York City's taxis. The benefits New Yorkers will see from this effort will be huge for drivers and passengers alike. As someone who has spent a significant chunk of time behind the wheel of a yellow cab, I truly believe that apps will substantially improve the quality of life for drivers, making their shifts more profitable and efficient. Right now, cab drivers are limited by their line of sight at any given time. A passenger can be very close by, but if we don't see them, we can't pick them up. We miss out on the fare, and they miss out on the cab ride. Drivers currently spend up to 40% of their time cruising empty, looking for passengers. This can change with smartphone apps like Halo. By improving...
That's the second time we heard that statistic, and I think Mr. Gerber brought that up. Where's this 40% empty coming from?
That comes from the latest TLC statistics that have been published by Bruce Shaler. And actually, the figure given by Houswini was even higher, it was 60%, so apparently it's gone up.
60% empty, Commissioner? Is there any...
That's what I mean.
Yeah, based on the TPAP data, the amount of time taxis are on the road, and then the amount of time they have fares in their vehicles, backing out some time for breaks and so forth, the 40% number is based off of the TPAP data.
Shift end minus shift beginning minus time passenger, there's a trip minus some allowance for brakes, over shift end minus shift beginning, you're saying is about 40%.
That's correct.
I'd like to maybe take a look at that.
So if a shift, for example, I mean, to spend a couple minutes on this, if an average, if a driver on average has between 20 and 25 fares in a 12-hour shift, and your average trip is about 12 minutes, some are going to be longer, some are going to be shorter, that's the amount of time that you have fare revenue, fare generated amount of time or miles.
And that also includes maybe the hour to get to the city?
Well, then after that, you have to back out the time coming from the garage into Manhattan Central Business Sector, then back, lunch breaks, bathroom breaks, and so forth.
Lunch breaks, bathroom breaks.
But there's a significant portion of the time when drivers are not generating revenue, they are either cruising for fares or resting between fares.
And just anecdotally, just, and to make that math a little bit easier, the shift is 12 hours, let's say you're on the road 10, you're only with passengers maybe about six of those hours, you've got four hours in total that you're riding around empty wasting gas, looking, so, yeah. All right, so, and this, this piece can change with smartphone apps like Halo. By improving drivers' ability to see where fares are, Halo can help New York's taxi drivers to fill their downtime, while making it easier for passengers to find taxis when they need them. On top of all this, Halo will help disabled passengers in New York City, as it already does in London, with its built-in accessibility switch that matches disabled rides with accessible cabs. By improving driver experience, the passenger experience is also inherently improved, whether it's by solving the longstanding challenge of helping those in wheelchairs to access taxis, to something as basic as improving the safety for women trying to catch a cab late at night. New York City is a leader in the tech and transportation worlds, and apps are the logical and natural next step in bringing new innovations to the taxi industry here. Halo is unique because it also provides a toolkit designed to make driver's shifts more profitable and efficient, apart from connecting them directly with passengers. Hundreds of drivers are already using Halo's app to access these features, and our community is growing every single day. The bottom line is, drivers by and large want e-hailing, and Halo is ready to begin offering this service as soon as the TLC allows it. Once we take this step, yellow cab drivers throughout the city will be able to make more money while providing New Yorkers with a better all-around taxi experience. Thank you.
My name is Delano Eloy. I've been driving cabs since 1982. I should take to a great man who was here with us, was David Bullock, helped me with all the paperwork, so I thank him a lot, so he's here with us. Thank you for allowing me to participate today and explain why taxi app will improve standard of living for both driver and passenger. My experience is very comprehensive and include driving both black car and yellow cab. New York City is a unique transportation market, and I know it will become more efficient when e-hails are finally approved for widespread use. App will not replace the typical street here, a symbol of New York City taxi scene. While the app make cab experience better, adding additional benefit, connecting passenger and the driver. For driver, it will help fill out our downtime, making our shift more profitable. For passenger, the app will make it easy to find rider and increase certainly about their option for getting to and from a location. GPS, credit card, payment, and other innovation have changed the way cab operate. The widespread popularity of smartphone make it clear, the app will be the next big thing to improve the taxi market. As someone like me who drive for 25 years, more than 25 years, in New York City, I see only upside to introduction of e-hailing apps. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Heikel? I'm sorry, I don't, yes, indeed. Followed by Ira Goldstein from the Black Car Fund, well, so much jealous, and followed by Sarah Angeles from Livery Base Owners Coalition.
Good afternoon. I'm Martin Heikel, I'm with Flatiron Apps, we're located in Union Square, we're a startup app developer, and the name of our app is Zapcab, you might be aware of it, we rolled it out this August, some months back. To start off, I, we've looked at all the rules very carefully, we met with Sweeney and staff, and our position is that there's excessive regulation here, in terms, and think that there's really no place for this amount of regulation when it comes into an app environment. First of all, regulation innovation can slow innovation and time to market. Second, the rules that are proposed create some barriers for startups. We talked about sort of fly-by-nights earlier, where a lot of these startups sort of start as a fly-by-night, if you will, with limited resources and so forth, but it might have tremendous innovation to bring to market and get the necessary investment that they need to grow. A big concern is that the rules that are stated today mandates that you have to integrate with TPAP. Now, our app that's working today has absolutely no need to connect into TPAP, because it's truly an electronic broadcast hailing app. There is no payment, and there is no confirmation back and forth between a driver and passenger. So, we have an app that's working today in the marketplace, and then the rules, and maybe this is an error, suggest that apps like ours now have to connect into TPAP, so we'd like that to be relooked at.
Yeah, if I could just interrupt for a second, I don't think that's correct, I know somebody else also said that, so perhaps we need some, you know, better clarity, but certainly not the intention. The intention is require TPAP integration only when there's a payment involved, and not even any payment, but a payment of the taxi fare. And just, you know, you said too much regulation, I share the premise, if I'm correct, identifying the premise, that we want to be as restrained as possible in regulating private commerce, that we only want to impose a requirement when there's a clear benefit in terms of consumer protection or safety. So I would ask, and it doesn't have to be right here, but identify that the elements of regulation that you feel are excessive or unnecessary, the two things, as I said in the outset here, that I felt were very important, are customer protection in terms of the price and the meter, so requiring, yes, integration with TPAP when you are paying for the taxi fare, and safety, minimizing the distracted driving possibility, and there we do think that there's some benefit. So those are the two things that I think, beyond that, if you see additional elements that are unnecessary, please, you know, identify now, or otherwise...
I think that just makes good practical sense, so I appreciate that clarification. In reading the documents, that's not our interpretation, so maybe that could be reexamine.
Okay, well, again, I have no doubt that...
But that is the case.
That the drafting is not, and no slide all to our exceptional lawyers, I have no doubt that the drafting does not achieve the absolute ideal amount of clarity, and that there, we, additional work can improve clarity. So as far as that goes, we certainly, we'll go back and make sure that that is crystal clear.
Okay, that's fantastic. I think the other thing, the other concern we have when I say sort of overreaching, is the fact that we have to become licensed, that now we have a regulatory body that's picking and choosing apps on behalf of the public.
You know, again, there, and I won't take too much time, the, just so people understand what licensing, the function that licensing serves, the work that it does, if you're going to have any regulations at all, then you do need that licensing scheme, that's the mechanism by which we insist that the fare come directly from the meter, and that the driver be disabled from using the app when the vehicle's in motion, otherwise we don't really have a mechanism for imposing that requirement. So the licensing is not meant to, for us to pick and choose, that's for the customers. Just the way that restaurants have to get a license, you know, they have to show that they, their kitchen is clean and, and safe for customers, but the health department isn't saying, "We think they do an excellent chicken parmigiana, and theirs is crummy," that's for the customers to decide. The licensing only is focused on the issue of customer protection on the price and safety. I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
No, thanks for that, for that clarification as well. Here's our view, that innovators, startups, create new things that can be very beneficial to the public, and need to be able to roll those out with, at sort of additional barriers, such as having to go through a licensing process, which includes payments and bonding and all kinds of other things that might be there, it could be subject to be rejected. Now, I understand when you talk about payment and the metering system to maintain the integrity there, but let me just back up for a second, talk about our app that's out there today, it's Zapcab. What we do is simply, a driver is able to download to the personal device, and any consumer, of course, can download the app to their personal device, and we don't need to touch the infrastructure of a taxi cab. Now, the beauty that's been brought to the market is that taxi cabs can see where there are hailing customers, and this is a true virtual hail, so this is like putting an arm out in the sky, there is no back and forth communication. So this is like putting an arm out in the sky, there is no back and forth communication.
I'm just curious, do you, do you have a sense of how frequently this is being used right now? How many passengers are using it and how frequently they find taxis in that fashion?
Well, we rolled that in August, August 8th, and the first thing we did in developing this app as a new-based company, because we know this market, is we wanted to conform to all the current rules and regs that exist today.
Admirable.
So what we have today, we conform with. And in fact, Chairman Yaski, there were some statements made on your behalf, your PR firm or PR people, saying that it looked like we were not in violation of any of the rules and regs that were out there. So we had 1,500, 2,000 cabs that signed up in a week, we had tens of thousands of passenger downloads and things were going great. And there was, traction was starting to take place. Now, we're talking about a very short timeframe. By September 7th, now we've only been rolled out three weeks, TLC started putting out notices to every cab on the DIMM saying, there are no apps authorized by TLC. And then there were consequences as a result. So you can imagine what that did to our business.
I see.
It tamped it down and taxi drivers couldn't differentiate between, well, they appear to be in conformance with rules and maybe others are not, you know, and we know who some of those might be, Uber and so forth. So now, what happens is last month alone, we still have 15,000 hails going out, but the number of cab drivers has gone way down that are receiving those hails. So now, that brings me to another point in the rules and regulations. What we'd like to see is some clarity brought around what e-hailing really is. There's sort of two pieces. You know, there's true e-hailing, which is just an indication of broadcast that you want to be picked up. And then there's e-dispatch, and it's been talked about here today, which is there's some confirmation that comes back. So there's an agreement between a passenger and driver for pickup. And Chairman, I recall in a meeting this past summer, the way you defined hailing is the absence of any prearrangement. And we thought that made a lot of sense. And so we're not involved in the business of prearrangement or dispatch. And actually, we think that
Are you saying that rules should prohibit that? In other words, should the rules prohibit, if in the next, you know, version of your product or a separate product that you want to offer that did involve the driver accepting the trip from the passenger, are you suggesting our rules should prohibit you from doing that?
No, we're not taking a firm position on that.
I see.
Because by the way, we have dispatch capability in our app for other markets.
Right.
But what we did is we rolled it out in the New York City market to preserve the history of hailing that goes on here. We think hailing makes a lot of sense. We're just bringing it as well.
I mean, you said firm, do you think we should, in terms of the kind of regulation and what's too much and whatnot, should we prohibit you from doing that, do you think?
Prohibit from dispatch?
Yeah. Prohibit you from adding the capability for the driver to say, yeah, I'm going to pick that person up?
I leave that up to you. Here's my concern, because I think Sweeney pointed out some risks this morning. And I encourage that the commission looks closely at some of the risks that were pointed out. I mean, maybe you start with taking hailing that exists today and bring it up to the next level and let's see how that works and preserve that system. And then maybe start looking at, or testing or piloting some dispatch-type approaches perhaps, because I think this can be highly disruptive and confusing initially to consumer public, because there's some unknowns here and risks that were brought to attention, you know, what happens in these various scenarios.
Got it.
So
Thank you.
So we prefer the e-hailing approach for now.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So do I have another moment or?
If you could conclude.
Okay.
And I'm responsible for the time you've taken. Thank you.
Well, we certainly appreciate your time in having some of this discussion. And in terms of separating out those two sort of definitions, I think I'll bring a little bit more clarity. The reason I pointed out is you might separate out that if we're only doing virtual pure true hailing, that maybe that doesn't have some of the same regulatory impacts that some of the other apps might require, certainly payment and everything else. And maybe it doesn't need to be licensed because we're operating today. Now, one of the things I don't know is, we're operating today, I assume, in having meetings with your staff, that we have not been asked to stop doing that. So now, the thing is, if we're operating today and successful and you lift sort of the thing from the driver saying that it's okay, then I'm not sure what the, why we need to be licensed if it's already been successful. So I'd like to eat that.
Yeah, that last thing you're pointing out, I think is important to underscore. You're correct that there's, there are very, there are competing viewpoints about even the state of the existing law. We've had once, you know, lawyers come in and tell us, none of the apps that are on the market or talked about are, would be legal. Others had said, they're already legal today. So I think you're right that we, in some sense, it's not really an option to leave things as they are. We have to provide clarity in our rules as to what's permitted and what isn't permitted. I agree with you.
Oh, thank you. And I think, you know, our type of app that's out there today and operating and is successful without sort of any oversight or licensing is really what the app world is about by and large. I mean, there's, you know, we know there's 750,000 apps that exist out there and I think, I doubt there's very many of those that have to be licensed by anybody. So we would encourage that you have a subset of your regulations that said, look, free enterprise, let it rain.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr., of course, Ira Goldstein, I'm sorry. Yes? Yeah, who's well-known to the TLC. Say, always a special privilege to be able to hear from you, Ira. Thank you.
Oh, you're too kind, Commissioner. It's true. But I always tell you that. My name is Ira Goldstein. I'm the chief operating officer of the Black Car Assistance Corporation and I'm speaking on behalf of the BCAC regarding the rules proposed by the TLC to permit the use of electronic devices to hail taxi services in New York. In connection with this testimony, I've submitted a portion of the white paper that we distributed to all the commissioners a few months ago and we gave out just the written part without the attachments today. The white paper reviews the history of what happened when passengers and taxi drivers could communicate by electronic device and explains why in 1985, New York City's city council and the TLC drew a sharp separation between those for-hire vehicles that answer only street hails and those for-hire vehicles that operate on a prearranged basis. The proposed rules will destroy the regulatory separation that history proved was necessary. Before I begin my testimony, I would like to acknowledge that the TLC, the BCAC, and other members of the private transportation industry have been engaged in discussions about the way that the smartphone technology may be integrated into the private transportation structure. The rules that are the subject of this hearing, however, do not reflect those discussions unless the BCAC is required to address what is before the commission today only. The BCAC opposes the proposed rules for e-hail applications because they violate New York's law and public policy. New York long ago made the decision that taxis should be reserved for street hail service. That decision was not made lightly or without due consideration. As the white paper details, it was based on New York's experience that when taxi drivers are permitted to accept passengers on any basis other than a street hail, the driver has the power to pick and choose which passengers to accept and the public has no ability to effectively monitor or control the driver's decision. The city council enacted laws to prevent that from happening. The e-hail rules proposed by the TLC violated these three of those laws. The first law that the proposed e-hail rules violate is section 19-502 of the New York City Administrative Code. That law defines taxis, in relevant part, as a vehicle permitted to accept hails from passengers in the street. The rules proposed by the TLC do not track that definition. Instead, they replace the legislative requirement that the passenger be physically hailing the taxi from the street with the TLC-created concept that the passenger be ready to travel, be currently ready to travel, excuse me. As the TLC proposes to amend chapter 51 of the rules, hail would be defined in part as a request through an electronic method for on-demand taxi cab service by a person who is currently ready to travel. There is no requirement in that definition that the person be standing in the street. In fact, under the new system contemplated by the TLC, one can easily imagine that New York would have a repeat of what happened in the early 1980s, when the person who gets the taxi cab hailed, it comes from, they may be in a comfortable restaurant while the person who cannot afford a smartphone is left standing outside in the cold as empty taxis pass her by. The harm that would be caused with the TLC's proposed definition of hail, that creates two separate methods to access a taxi, goes even deeper when one recognizes that there is a segment of the population that does not own a smartphone or a credit card and those people would not have equal footing to access taxis. That segmented world is exactly what New York rejected in 1985, when the city council decided to ground the definition of taxi cabs in street hails and when the TLC mandated that all two-way radios be removed from taxi cabs because those taxis service radio customers, therefore making their taxi cabs unavailable for street hails. And there's a citation that's in the white paper. The TLC cannot now unilaterally decide that taxi cabs can operate based on prearrangement. That is a right that only the city council possesses and unless and until the council amends section 19-502 of the code, the proposed rules are illegal. It is worth mentioning that the proposed rules define hail as requesting a taxi cab through an electronic method, not just through a smartphone application. A phone is an electronic method. And just to shorten it up, it's been discussed before that a phone could be used as a regular phone to now make a reservation. The second law the proposed e-hail rules violate are sections 19, 507A, 1, and 2 of the code that provide in relevant part, that no driver or taxi cab shall seek to ascertain without justifiable grounds the destination of a passenger before such passenger shall be seated in the vehicle and no driver of a taxi cab shall refuse without justifiable grounds to take any passenger or prospective passenger to any destination within the city. The proposed rules lack any guidance as to what would be justifiable grounds. This is especially dangerous because all of the current smartphone applications used to connect drivers and passengers allow the drivers to accept or reject a job. They can do so for a number of reasons, but it would be a safe assumption that the main ground for declining a job opportunity would be based, among other things, on a passenger's occasion or potential profitability of a trip. The proposed rules therefore reopen the door to the past where taxi cabs could reject trips to certain neighborhoods or hide behind an on-radio call shield, behind an on-radio call shield and reject a passenger standing in the street trying to hail a cab based on socio-economic profile. The third law the proposed e-hail rules violate is New York's base station requirement. Under section 19-511 of the code, any communication systems used for dispatching or conveying information to drivers of licensed vehicles must have a base station license. There can be no doubt that the smartphone technology at issue here is a communication system and that the e-hail application provider dispatches information to drivers, just as any for-hire company dispatches information to drivers. Therefore, e-hail application providers are subject to the same base station requirement as are all other for-hire companies that dispatch information to vehicles. The TLC has presumably chosen to ignore this requirement because a base station license triggers a whole host of other rules and regulations, including that the station have no fewer than 10 affiliated vehicles and it may not dispatch any vehicles with which it is not affiliated. The one caveat to this comment is that the TLC intended its proposed rule, section 78-10A, that provides that an e-hail application provider licensee must obtain licenses and permits required by applicable local law, state, or federal to require that e-hail application providers obtain a base station license. If that is the TLC's intention, then request that itself states. I can appreciate that e-hail application providers are in the business of developing applications and not in the business of delivering transportation services. New York City's city council, however, has made the legislative decision that any company that dispatches or conveys information to drivers must have a base station license. The new chapter 78 proposed by the TLC tries to sidestep the structure set in place for New York's private transportation system. Thus, by promulgating chapter 78, rather than requiring the e-hail application providers to be subject to same base station license rules as are all others who use a communication system to convey information to drivers, the TLC is acting outside of the scope of its regulatory mandate. On that, on that point, it is curious why the TLC has proposed these new rules to allow taxis to provide prearranged transportation service. As the white paper reviews, the mayor's office and the TLC impane on various experts and commissions back in the 1980s to commission studies to determine whether taxis could accept hails by an electronic method without damaging the public. After years of studying the issue, the experts unanimously decided that they could not and the radios were banned from New York taxis. The TLC now wants to reverse its previous decision without any study or research to support its decision. It would seem obvious that such a reversal would be based on exhaustive research, but no such studies or research had been proffered. Indeed, the research, excuse me, indeed, the reversal and these proposed rules are arbitrary and capricious for at least three reasons. First, after creating the black car industry specifically so that taxis would no longer provide prearranged service, it is arbitrary and capricious for the TLC to now ignore the benefits accrued by segmenting the for-hire industry and return New York to the same situation that existed 25 years ago and necessitated the creation of the black car industry in the first place. Second, the proposed rules are arbitrary and capricious because they favor one segment of the for-hire industry to the detriment of the other for no apparent public purpose, given the damage caused before when taxi cabs could choose between answering with street hail or hail by an electronic method. Third, the proposed rules are arbitrary and capricious because they permit taxis to accept prearranged calls but do not permit black cars and liveries to accept street hails. If the TLC has decided that the established regulatory framework no longer serves a purpose, it should tear the whole structure down and not cherry pick segments of the for-hire industry. From every angle, these proposed new rules will cause New York's private transportation system to turn its back on its prior experience and repeat the mistakes of the past. The BCAC strongly urges the TLC to reconsider its decision to upend the hard-fought and fully justified decision made by the city to reserve taxis exclusively for street hail service. I thank you very much for the opportunity to testify before you today on behalf of the BCAC. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is your testimony writing? Did you give it to us in writing?
Yes, I gave them to Mira during the break and we have extra copies also.
I'd like a copy of it.
Sure.
Am I correct? I understand your testimony be, any rule that permits an app, any rule allowing an app that enables a passenger to hail a specific taxi would be unlawful for the reasons you described earlier, the city council, the administrative code provisions, you said it's violated. In other words, it's not, it's not fixable by tailoring, you know, in any way, certain distance or a period of time or anything like that. It's not a fixable problem, it's a simply flat unlawful.
Correct. I think that it's the pair and that final piece, it's not passengers and drivers finding each other by the use of apps and allowing them to connect in some way with the actual making of that prearrangement, that reservation connection, is what we believe is the legal problem.
The app kind of stepping in the shoes of a dispatcher, essentially.
And yes, that's correct in one sense, sure. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I unfortunately have to go. I apologize, I did want to hear all the speakers. We have a lot left, right?
There were another five or six.
I'll stay for one more.
All right. Seeta Angelus from Livery Base Owners Coalition, followed by B2B Desai, Taxi Works Alliance. Workers Alliance.
It was intended for good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon Chairman Yaski and members of the commission. My name is Siri Angelus, spokesperson for the Livery Base Owners Association, which composes of 125 base owner stations in New York and approximately 12,000 vehicles that are currently affiliated throughout New York City. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify on the proposed TLC smart apps and the T-PAP rules. A lot has been said during the day, but I feel it's important that we carry the voice of our base owners and the members. Technology is changing people's worlds every single day. The speed in which technology is advancing is truly incredible. In this day and age, it is almost impossible to stay up to date with the latest gadgets or apps. But technology has to work in a way that fits into the New York City transportation structure that we have so that it provides some added value. It is because of this that we must proceed with caution embracing technology into an industry without first doing or analyzing the impact that it can have in the pre-arranged part of this industry. The livery base owners are not against the progress or integration of technology in our industry. However, we do find that the introduction and approval of these rules may be premature at this point in time for the following reasons. We just overcame the worst hurricane in the city, worst in history in the last 100 years. In no way has the industry had the time to properly analyze the material of what we are dealing with before us. It has been almost one month and there's still areas in the cities that do not have heat or electricity. There is still an open issue with the street hail livery legislation and its outcome. There is no way to know the economic impact to livery bases in resurging areas, borrowing the central Manhattan districts such as Williamsburg, Harlem, and Washington Heights, let alone the livery bases that are currently located in the central Manhattan district and operate within the scopes of the rules and the regulations. They will now have to compete with yellow taxis in the pre-arranged sector and at the same time, there will be a lack of taxis to serve the street hails of the central Manhattan districts. New York City is one of the top tourist attractions in New York State, if not the world. Our visiting tourists will be underserved in getting a street hail pickup if those taxis are responding a hail or app call. The only ones benefiting from this scenario at this point will be the smartphone app companies and their investors. Enforcement of these rules will require more TLC inspectors, resulting in more summonses for our drivers and bases alike. Modernizing only one sector of the industry will leave the rest of us at a great disadvantage at this point also. The issue that we have is that we do not want to accept technology in our industry because, quite frankly, it is necessary. We must embrace technology. However, this approach forces our industry to adapt to technology instead of technology adapting to us and to our model. According to the Taxi Unlimited, 50% of the riding public would like to have these applications. But that may be the case. We cannot be governed only by public opinion and what people want. But we have to also understand the reality in the current structure in history as well. The Taxi Unlimited Commission has a responsibility to not only regulate but also preserve the businesses that we have created throughout the years. We are very thankful for allowing us the opportunity to voice our concerns and respect our input. We will answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I know it's been a long, I appreciate your patience in staying with us throughout the length of the hearing.
Good afternoon. Thank you for saying. I'm Beta B Desai and with me is Mr. Mohan Singh. We're both with the Taxi Workers Alliance, interest of time, thought we'd come up together. So first, I just, actually, just for the record, wanted to thank Chairman Yaski and the TLC staff. I know that, you know, the days and weeks following the destruction from the hurricane were difficult for many of us on a number of levels and we really appreciate the fact that actually the TLC remained really accessible to us in terms of finding fuel and, you know, trying to address the shortages as well as addressing, you know, outreach to drivers regarding disaster aid and just the different changes with the traffic regulations. So we want to thank you for that, particularly for, I mean, the operation that we saw at both at Woodside and especially in Brooklyn was just amazing and we want to thank you for all that you did to put that together.
Thank you.
Sure. So with regards to these particular rules, I just had a number of comments. First, I have to say that we really applaud the TLC for making the smartphone for the app, making it optional for the drivers. This is the first time that I have seen in this industry where the technology will actually be a driver-driven market. We've never been in the driver's seat before when it comes to such economics in this industry. So we're glad to see that happening. We're also glad to see that it will now be an open, regulated market. I mean, we keep hearing from different companies to say, oh, well, why do we need these regulations? Well, guess what? We work under regulations every single day. When we interact with the public, there's a meter, there's several regulations in place that prevent any kind of price gouging or overcharging. Well, when we are the consumer in the industry, drivers should have the same protections that we are asked to extend to the consumers that we serve. And I don't think, and in fact, by having an open market that is regulated, you're actually extending the playing field for more companies to participate. So it's not a restriction, it's actually, it's much more of an opening than the exclusive contracts were. Our main concerns around the smartphones have been, we don't want to see any additional cost for electronic processing. Already taxi drivers, we used to pay 5%. Since the new rules were passed in July, we no longer pay per transaction, but we're paying the $10 flat fee, which is in addition, you know, as part of the lease cap. Of course, we pay that whether or not the driver works on that day and so even if there are no credit card transactions coming in, that fee is still being paid by the driver and the medallion owner, the fleet, the agent is able to use that toward the cost of processing. And so, you know, we support having a second, you know, kind of electronic payment option besides the reader in the form of the smartphone, but, you know, we want to make it clear that the driver should not have to pay anything extra, you know, as we make this advancement. So we're glad to see that at least as the rules are currently written, the driver would not have to pay anything extra and we strongly urge you to keep that within these rules, you know, up to the final vote. We are concerned that there might be inconsistencies, the rules are not clear about how to, you know, kind of match up TLC enforcement with the issues around e-hailing, but as, you know, Ashwini mentioned, particularly in terms of refusals, but as well as the use of electronic devices. And by the way, we would agree that a driver should be allowed to, you know, for a simple tap, you know, if they're getting a notification that without having to pull over, and I don't think you have to just pull over, you just have to be standing still, right? So you don't have to be actually pulled over. You could be in traffic or you could be at a red light and at that point, you could still respond to it according to the present rules. We would just add that it should be extended that even if you're not standing still, whether red light, traffic, or pulled over, that, you know, you should still just be able to tap to accept, you know, to mark your availability. But in terms of refusals, we're really concerned because the rules have to be clear, not only for the drivers, but certainly also to the passengers and to the app companies themselves. You know, there has to be complete clarity so nobody here, the driver or the passenger, has to suffer because of a void. And we definitely support that all of these payments should go through the meter. We actually have always believed that when it comes to the fair payment between the passenger and the driver, having more regulation, having it be crystal clear, is not only protects the passenger, it also protects the driver. Because, you know, the vast majority, you know, universally speaking, the trips, there aren't overcharges and the fact that we're regulated allows us to actually prove that and evidence that. And so we would, you know, we would support any kind of regulation that would ensure that these payments remain on the meter and, you know, regulated to the fullest extent so not only the passenger protected, but again, so is the drivers themselves. The idea that a T-PAP vendor would possibly consider having to electronically transfer over the six cents per trip could be somehow onerous is just, I don't even know, it feels insult, like it's just, it's, you know, it's insult upon injury. I mean, you're in this industry, you're making money because drivers are accumulating these fares, they're paying for the processing, of course, every vendor gets a cut out of that. The idea that you can't electronically transfer over six cents, drivers are paying that money. It's not coming out of a garage, an agent, or the vendor's pocket, it's coming out of the driver's pocket. Anybody in this industry who's asked to turn that money over should do it with humility and grace compared, think on the other hand, the number of drivers who go without healthcare and disability every single day, which is a much bigger hardship than you electronically having to transfer something over. As far as the T-PAP itself is concerned, we also think that, you know, you don't have to overload it with so much content, it is a short trip. I mean, whatever, people may not be turning it off as often, we still maintain the position from talking to passengers, they're still not really big fans of it, we don't even think that screen is necessary, I'm sorry to tell you. And certainly to overload it with long content seems really unnecessary. And it's nice to hear that local businesses are thrilled with the passenger information monitor. I guess that means the advertising revenue numbers, which we never received, that the TLC asked for a couple of months ago. I guess we can now, you know, we can infer from the happiness from local businesses that those ad numbers are actually probably pretty good. That would conclude my testimony, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Singh.
Well, I'm Mohan Singh, I'm a cab driver.
Did you get taxis anywhere?
Yes, this.
Can you tell me?
Yes. The thing is that when you are putting an app, so that this app should go only to the taxi, and as you say, this is a smartphone, when you're using a smartphone, it can be transferred to any car. So we have to be sure that it is used in the same place where it should be used.
Yeah, that thing you mentioned, that's an important point that the commissioners will underscore also for you that, and really, for the gentleman who was from Zap Cab, another reason why we think licensing is important is we want to require and we can put in place mechanisms to make sure it actually happens, that any apps like this are usable only by TLC licensed drivers. In other words, I do fear that if we leave it to the unregulated, you know, completely unregulated, that you would see apps enable a proliferation of straight flights and I think that's.
I forgot your correlation to a restaurant having a license, we don't judge the meal, but you just make sure that, I thought that was an excellent analogy, actually.
Anyway, that missing point you raised is an important one, our regulations, just, you know, our proposed rules do include that, that the app has to be designed so it can only be used by, if it's taxis, TLC licensed taxi, yellow taxi, medallion drivers.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that, Commissioner Marina, thank you for your.
I just want to point one thing out, Ashwini, I, just quickly, I mean, that 40% number was kind of bothering me and if it includes going to and from the base and lunch, that's three hours out of 12, that's 25% right there. So it's a little misleading because then there's only really 15% left over and if you count five 20-minute breaks, then that's that. So it's a little misleading to say that they're empty 40% of the time when you're counting from 12 to 12 and not including your commute time and your lunch hour because that's 25% of it right there. So I think a lot of people are basing their opinions on that number when that number's not really representative of the truth or the facts.
We should email around, you know, it's definitely, there's some estimation in that calculation, it's kind of decent plus or minus, I think, but you can estimate around the raw numbers it's based on and then you can draw your own conclusions about the assumed break time in it. That's fair.
Thank you all, I'm sorry I have to leave early.
Your presence has been very beneficial, thank you.
Commissioner, Chairman, Ashwini.
Tarek Mala, the remaining speakers, Tarek Mala, Jing Wang, it says here Herman, yep, John McDonough, and Jason DeWeller, I'm sorry, Jason DeWellers, and that would be, that is it.
I think my presentation says good morning, I guess I have to change it to good afternoon.
So ordered.
I have a prepared testimony, but I've heard a couple of remarks that I enjoyed having my break to prepare, but I'll be very brief. There's a lot of different terminologies is being used by colleagues and testimonies and so on that says leveling the playing field and it's always intriguing to use leveling the playing field partially, not totally, which doesn't really make sense. So if we're talking about leveling the playing field, it should be on the same field, on the same rules for everybody. So we can't say, we want to increase efficiency for a yellow taxi and use leveling the playing field as an excuse and then say, well, we're going to allow the yellow taxis or the yellow cab to take pre-arranged, but we're not going to allow the livery and the black car to do street hail, therefore by the same statement. And I understand the desire or the intention or the direction of the administration to do completely unregulated business and free market, maybe not unregulated, but a free market where everybody can do whatever they want. And I find, I probably not be naive enough to think that the yellow cab industry does not want to diminish the value of the yellow cab by saying it's a free-for-all. So let's use that word, leveling the playing field.
I mean, to be fair, I think saying that the goal is unregulated, free-for-all, anybody do whatever they want, I'm sure you didn't mean that to characterize.
Absolutely not. But the direction to deregulation in the whole industry around the world is an existing model and it may or may not work. It's not disrespect to the regulators, it is a business model that is studied and the more I read about it, I found out it is less successful. I'm going to join my voice to everybody else who praised the existing and the previous scheme that made New York City the wonderful, moving, dynamic city. Let's not break what we have in anticipation of unstudied concepts. Let me read my very brief, it says, "Tart my lap for those who don't know me, I come before you today representing the Livery Roundtable. As an umbrella organization, we represent collective interest to the advancement of the livery industry. I am comforted this small afternoon to be speaking with all and know that we stand in different segments of the for-hire industry as well as some of the medallion industry, but unified in our resolution, in our resolve to the commitment of success of the respective industries. With the sentiment that I convey to you that the Livery Roundtable unanimously poses the approach taken by the TLC to institute legislation on technology that has not been requested, unnecessary, and has been falsely justified as being tech-friendly. While we have met with the TLC as they solicited us, we have not, we have no interest in negotiating terms to institute a system that would place many of our members out of business. We find it insulting that rumors placed on our name that we, members of the TLC..." We find it insulting that rumors placed on our name that we, members of the TLC, that another segment of the industry, that we are in support of such negotiations. We also find it alarming that the TLC would take such measures to provide with five points, for the, provide us with five points analysis as how the proposed rules would work for the city of New York. Allow me to, can I explain the myth? Reduced waiting time. While this may provide slightly level of convenience in a small number of instances, there would be no substantial increase of efficiency in the city transportation and infrastructure, since the number of medallion vehicles remain the same under the New York State law. Increase the number of cars outside the central business district. While app technology will tell drivers that passengers are outside in the central business district, it by no means guarantees that they will drive outside to pick them up. To the contrary, it may actually leave passengers using the app outside the central district area increasingly frustrated when they still cannot get the taxi. If by the TLC-owned numbers, 90% fall of all trips are taking place, are taking place from the airports or to the central business district, what are the odds that a trip will match up? It does not seem to be appreciable number of trips that would result in especially not enough in the base policy decision. The TLC claims that 40%, I guess we hammered this one to death, so-
There's life in it yet, go ahead.
We bring you that this number is not accurate, really, I mean, the downtime concept, sometimes it's so clear, and it's back knowledge for me, so hard to explain, but the downtime formula and the efficiency of dispatching is something that the company I worked for, and the previous companies I worked for in this industry since 99, and many of my colleagues have been at it for longer, is an art. And increasing efficiency for dispatching, minimizing the downtime, minimizing the time between dispatches, is something that we thrive on. Bringing that concept and you say, well, this is a beautiful tool that works for for-hire industry, let's add that to the yellow cab industry, then the whole technology, the whole concept of doing business for yellow cab has to adopt how pre-arranged work. It doesn't work if you just take this concept, add it in, you're not gonna have a successful business. I could write papers on this. Additional payment options, we know very well that the payment options was the original intention of this direction, that we wanted to make e-payment. This went out of the window completely because it doesn't work unless you have pre-arranged, and there are existing technology today to pay with a cellphone such as Google Wallet, anything with near-field technology, that is, by first quarter of this coming year, most if not all cellphones, smart or otherwise, will have NFC built into them. New York City has seen a stick frenzy, the numbers is 14,000 versus 34,000, let's pay some attention to the 34,000 that are built, custom, grew up, have the pre-arranged in their blood, be able to utilize and cover the needs, not the 13,000 vehicles. I'm trying to cut down. I'm gonna make sure that the rest of my statement is available for everyone, and a copy will be received. I'm happy to answer questions if there's any.
Just, for everybody, just benefit the, that our calculation of time that a taxi is occupied, T-Pep tells us, that this is the one we really know, that during the course of a shift, the taxi will have a passenger in it about 4.8 hours. I apologize, about four hours. We're assuming an hour commute, maybe that's too little, maybe it's more than that, and 2.2 hours total breaks. I don't know where the 2.2 came from, but that's apparently what we assumed. And, that sounds also, that sounds generous. So then that leaves four hours with a passenger in it, 4.8 cruising out of the 12, empty. Whether that's off by an hour, plus or minus, honestly, I don't think it makes a big difference for this particular policy debate, and it's gotta be within that range. Anyway, go on.
This exact statement is where I say I can write papers on, and I'll be very, very brief, thank you.
Yeah.
When you say available time, wouldn't you want the vehicle to be available to be picked up? Wouldn't part of that time has to be allowed for cruising?
Absolutely.
So by you diminishing that available time, you're basically saying, I'm gonna take the availability of yellow cab away from the availability, so the standing, street-hailing customer is not gonna have that option anymore.
See, I guess we're, my assumption is that the driver is smart, and certainly that kind of over the range of the 35,000, they function as a group intelligently in the following way, that they will choose to use it if they think it will get them a passenger faster at that particular moment and in that particular location than cruising. And if they're right about that, again, over the full range of uses, then that's better, than you have reduced the waiting time overall. Do you follow? And I think that's, you know, I think we can assume that drivers, some will be mistaken, but in the range of it, I think you can assume that they'll basically get that right, because their living depends on it.
And for that formula, we're assuming the six or seven mobile app builders are gonna all overlap to make that availability or that broadcast available, so, I mean, the chances, the throw of the dart into a map and having this concept work to reduce efficiency is making great assumptions that that customer is using the right app, the one that the driver isn't positioned for to be able to use. It's not a single unified concept.
If I can, and you know, I don't wanna try people's patience, I don't think, I don't think there's, there are a huge number of assumptions, there's one basic assumption, that is that a driver will use an app, any app, if and only if they think, the driver believes that the use of that app at that moment in that location will find her or him a passenger faster than they otherwise would. That's the only assumption.
Right.
And everything follows from that.
And that assumption would only work, I'm sorry-
No, that's what I'm just saying, and Joseph, I'll just finish, and this will be the last, that, sure, that assumption kind of built into that is that the first time, or the first 15 times, they may find they're, you know, it'll take some trial and error to figure out which app, for any given app, if that's true, but that'll get washed out pretty quickly, and then you're in the long run, where we're all still alive, fortunately, and then that assumption holds. That's the only assumption behind all this.
May I just close with one thing?
Please, and you have the final word.
I have, before I came in today, I have received a summons from the TLC, telling me that one of my drivers, one of the affiliated drivers, that was committing a street hail, had a destroyed inspection sticker. So the sticker wasn't clear, and I got a summons. Mind you, I can defend it, but I'm gonna waste a day and go and attend and show the proof that I had the certificate of inspection, all of that. Are we requiring the mobile apps to be responsible for the vehicles and the drivers' actions on the street? That's all I have to close with.
Thank you. Jing Wang Herman, followed by John McDonough, followed by Jason DeWillers, that's the remainder of our list. And then we'll have the musical interlude.
Good afternoon, my name is Jing Wang Herman, CEO of GetTaxi USA. GetTaxi already operates in more than 15 cities around the world, and our feedback today is based on our experience in global cities like London, Moscow, and Tel Aviv. We would love for e-Hail to work in New York. However, it's difficult for us to embrace these particular set of rules. We see three major problems. One, the current language for e-Hail has negative unintended consequences for both drivers and passengers. Two, T-Pep, which should be the backbone for all future taxi technology, is not being fully utilized. Three, finally, smartphone dispatch applications have been prevalent in the for-hire industry for many years. We should now create and maintain now a different standard for taxi apps. I'm also a licensed taxi driver, and I know what it's like on the streets, and also a New Yorker who takes lots and lots of taxis, so I'd like to speak today as a driver, as a New Yorker. So as a taxi driver, I want a simple, consistent system, but these rules will make driving incredibly confusing. There'll be many apps in the market, and I'll try to sign up for as many as possible in order to maximize my fares. Because e-Hail jobs are not integrated into T-Pep, payment is, but the jobs are not, I have to manually update my status and my availability in every app that I use. When I step in e-Hail, I know that I'll end up waiting on the street, because unlike the definitions and the rules, people that use these taxi apps are rarely quote-unquote "ready" to travel. With access to e-Hail, people like to use apps in the comfort of their home, or office, or at the restaurant, or at the bar, so on. Some apps will pay me for wait time, others won't, and if I end up, if I give up waiting and I cancel the job, some apps will penalize me, others won't. Unfortunately, the rules as written don't do anything to eliminate this confusion.
I mean, are you suggesting we regulate all those business practices, or we let the drivers decide which work for them?
I'm not advocating more regulation, as I agree that regulation does limit innovation, I'm just saying, it's very complex, and the rules that currently are written have gaps, and yet in some other areas it goes-
You know, I mean, I don't wanna be argumentative, just, if you're saying it's a problem that some, one app might penalize for wait time, another won't, and so forth, that's all, you know, that's true, the alternative to that, well, you could say, don't do any of this, or you could say, will, or you could say, we prescribe in detail the business practices of the app, or you can have the, you know, our choice, which is, leave it up to the driver and the app, the driver decide which app to use, and the app developer decide what to offer, and then let them sort it out in the market. I think there's only three choices.
I just-
Please, please, go ahead, I'm sorry.
As a New Yorker, I cannot imagine being unable to hail a taxi on the street, and unfortunately, I think that's the most likely outcome of these rules. Unlike other markets, supply of taxis in New York is fixed, it has been fixed relatively for decades. Allowing dispatch, which e-Hail is, allowing dispatch for taxis, which happen to be the cheapest of all the vehicles that are regulated under the TLC, will shift a tremendous amount of demand from car service to taxis, and if the apps are successful, street hail will likely be eradicated, and illegal street hail will fill the supply gap. Lots of New Yorkers will want to use their smartphone to get a taxi, but all New Yorkers will still want the ability to street hail. Here's what we're for, we're for a faster, safer, and more efficient New York. We think well-written, carefully-written regulations are essential. All we ask is that the TLC will take the time necessary to understand the real implications before finalizing rules. I hope we can all work together and get this right the first time. That's all.
Thank you, I would, again, I'm very much welcome, and I'm guessing that you may have already had this conversation with Ashwini or someone else here, that the specific ways in which you would like to see the rules improved, so we will follow up on that. And Mr. McDonough, and then Mr. DeWillers.
I'd like to thank the Commission for giving me permission to speak here, but I wanna just start off thanking the TLC for giving the fare rate to the drivers there very recently. I cannot explain to you how beneficial that has been since the day that has kicked in, and how the money has come directly to the drivers, and particularly going into this season now of Christmas and everything, that the money has been greatly appreciated. I'm a yellow cab driver, I've been driving a cab over 30 years, but I also host a show on WBAI on a weekly basis, and throughout the years I've done cab-driving shows. And in doing those cab-driving shows and taking phone calls, it's almost inevitable, I'll always get a call from an African-American stating how they're being passed up by yellow cabs. One of the benefits that's gonna happen with this app is that the driver who downloads the app has made a commitment, that if he pings onto that, he is going to that fare, picking that fare up, and going to whatever neighborhood it is. And Halo is self-regulating itself. If they find out the driver is discriminating or not going to the neighborhood, that passenger emails Halo, and if he gets two or three complaints, he is put off the app. So that is self-regulating right there, when they're talking about regulations. And I would plead with the Commission, please do not delay on this, do not set up another commission to discover what your commission is going to do, and it's very interesting now that a lot of the people that are against the app are citing weather conditions here in New York City, that we should put it off because it was a hurricane. Well, let me inform them, we probably got a blizzard coming down the pipe, oh, we're gonna put it off now when the blizzard comes. I think this Commission is capable of coming to decisions despite the inclement weather that we're going to have very shortly, and come to that, and just look to what's going on in London, Boston, and Chicago, and look what the passengers are saying in those areas, and how the apps are working, and I think if it's good enough for them, it's good enough for New York.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jason DeWillers. Yes, Commissioner, this is the last person signed up to speak, so I thank you again, thank you very much, and Mr. McDonough, thank you as well for your patience, and I know it's been a long morning and afternoon.
Thank you. My name is Jason DeWillers, over the company called Cabulous. Thanks to everybody for sticking around, and thanks for putting this together. First, I'd like to applaud the TLC for taking on the e-Hail, basically the whole entity, because it's something that the entire country is dealing with right now.
It's a fine line between bravery and foolishness, yes, and thank you.
And we're one of the very few apps that actually deal directly with the different regulating bodies, and there's a lot of cities out there that are just ignoring it, so I do appreciate the fact that you bring it right up front with everybody. Apps are here, and they're here for a reason, is because they actually do work, and the public wants them. It's pretty straightforward. They will be here one way or another, and that's why in the taxi market, it is highly regulated for a reason. It's for the consumer safety and many other reasons, but I am actually all for regulations within the taxi industry, because it would be like political mass with taxi cabs out there if there wasn't. I'm not sure if you guys know what political mass is, but, just a bunch of taxi, yeah. There's a bunch of other apps out there, which the IATR calls the rogue apps. That is, what they like to do is they like to use Twitter, lots of people, they bulldoze past regulations, which is definitely something that I and my company is not against, it's about doing it right, because it's meant to be done right. We are actually one of the only apps, if actually, I might be going a little in here, but by stating that we are the only application that actually does integrate with the meter. So, all rides that are paid within the application, the information is directly fed electronically into, from the meter, from the central impulse arm meters. So when I saw that in the rules, I applauded that, because-
You're, pardon me, you're now operating-
Not in New York.
Yeah, elsewhere in the US?
We're in 40 cities in the United States, yes.
And, where, in those places, or at least in some of them, the fare is fed directly from the meter without driver intervention to the-
Correct.
That's interesting. Through the, kind of, the T-Pep-like systems that are in those cities, or through, from the meter- the meter in a Bluetooth way?
So it's actually done through, because in many cities it's not, the systems aren't regulated, it's open market for that. What we do is we actually provide, and this is more to my point that I was going to bring up, we provide a dedicated device, which you have also brought up as well, that stays with the car. There's a Bluetooth dongle for all of the meters that integrates into the device that's in the car, and then that goes to the servers that then goes to the passenger's application.
Look at that.
At the end of the ride, you just literally hit, you end the ride, and it goes directly into our device that we provide for the fleets for free. We work with fleets where it's applicable. And then it goes to the driver. So the driver actually, or the, I'm sorry, it goes to the passenger. So the passenger actually gets the fare amount plus whatever extras, tolls, things like that, and then they add their tip on whatever they want to put it on, approve it, and then it sends it back to the driver's device that way.
Brilliant.
My question is, it's pretty apparent that by integrating with the T-PAP and also the meter, that having a driver on, having it on their personal phone, to actually integrate with the meter is impossible. The fail rate is just astronomically high for it to actually integrate there. So in my opinion, that requires an in-car device that stays with the car. My question is, is with that being the case, is there going to be any regulations as to how many devices is it going to be in the car and what kind of devices it's going to be in the car, and what it is possible is capable of? If it's left open, I'm actually one for regulation because it makes it, so it's very clear-cut. It makes it, without letting that happen, it's like the Wild West. It makes it that you'll have a Christmas tree of devices going off on the dashboard, and you want to talk about not safe.
Then I'm glad you raised that, and Commissioner, this is something that other folks have raised also in their comments, the advisability of a limitation as to how many devices. I think we, certainly my inclination, you know, pending the conversation with yourself and the other Commissioners, is that you do not want to have six iPhones mounted on the dashboard, that's just too distracting. So I, thank you again for, thank you for bringing that up.
And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you for your participation here throughout it. Folks, thank you for your patience. I think this was extremely productive. I will just tell people in the audience that I spoke with some of the Commissioners before, who had to leave before they left. I think all of them found it very, very informative, very helpful to be able to air all the issues. We will continue to work with this. For people who have said, you know, they have raised issues they want to discuss with us, we're going to be working diligently over the next couple of weeks. I do believe that we'll be in a position to finalize this in December and vote on it at our December meeting, so people should expect that. And with that, the hearing is concluded. Thank you very much.